Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Blair County Commissioners Meeting for Thursday, August 14th, 2025, at being 10:01 a.m. I'd ask that you please all join me in a moment. Silent prayer. If you'd please join me in the stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on my nation, on its ground, in the mission of liberty, justice, and law.
Thank you. Executive Session Announcement?
Thank you. An executive session was held on August 11th, 2025, at approximately 10:00 a.m. with the Commissioners Chief Clerk and Finance Director regarding one position and one property. An executive session was held on August 12th at approximately 10:15 a.m. with the Commissioners Chief Clerk and H.R. Director regarding one position.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for 4:10 2025, 4:17 2025, 7:31 2025, and 8:07 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? This is usually when Kay would ask questions. Hearing none. Commissioners comments?
I just wanted to remind everyone that most of our school districts in Blair County will be starting next week, so we've started seeing school buses, practicing their routes. But next week, there will be also kids, so look out for school buses, look out for kids walking to and from school or biking, and let's keep everyone safe for the start of the year.
Thank you.
I don't have anything today. Thank you.
I thought you were going to comment on the ag progress.
Oh, yes. Well, I have two items actually then related to agriculture. One of our board members for the Conservation District, John Morrow, a wonderful, very dedicated to agriculture man. He was involved in dairy farming and just a lot of different things. Unfortunately, passed away unexpectedly on Sunday. His wife has been a volunteer for many years with Fort Robledale, and she is left behind as a widow. So please keep Karen Morrow in your thoughts, and of course, pray for John as well. That is the sad news. The good news is that this week has been the Ag Progress Days up at Penn State. I had the opportunity finally to go yesterday and see some of the fields with the research that they're doing, and it's fascinating, the things that they're trying to learn about, you know, getting better production from fruit trees and from animals, and just to make sure that there is food security that we in America can provide for our citizens and not rely on food from other countries. So it was, if you ever get an opportunity to go up to it, it's really something. It's huge. I didn't get to go to all of the different exhibitors and things, but it was very well attended and very informative. And since agriculture is one of our biggest industries in Pennsylvania, it is something important to know about and to follow and encourage. Thank you.
Can you run us through the consent agenda, please?
Sure. Resolution 380 2025, A is ratification of the seven warrants that are listed, B, ratification of total payroll for the paycheck dated August 8th, 2025, and the total amount of $954,589.62. There's a list of budget transfers here for vehicle insurances. Section D, 2025 budget transfer to cover the fees for maintenance on county vehicles in the amount of $125, and Sections E, F, G, and H are our employments, resignations, terminations, and retirements.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm an aye with an abstention to the payments to Hollaysburg Borough.
Thank you. Staff reports and special business, Controller Stickell. I do not see him.
He was here.
Okay. Make a motion for the 2024 Audit Presentation of the 2024 Audit Report by that company. And I think you're here, so please step up and give us your report, and I apologize, you can say the name.
Zelenkovsky Axaroff.
There you go.
We just always say Z.A. It's easier to say it that way.
I didn't know that.
And it's easier to remember, too. So my name's Derek Schrader. I was one of the principals on the audit for the 2024 Blair County Financial Statement Audit, as well as the single audit. I also have here with me Zeppelin Brodt. He was one of the seniors on the job, so anything that I can't answer, he should be able to. So first off, I'd like to thank everyone at the county for helping us complete the audit. They've always been able to provide us with everything that we need. They've been able to give us good information, which is always a real treat. Sometimes, we don't always get those from our clients. It's a little bit more of a back and forth of pulling and pushing, so we've never really had to deal with that here. Everyone's always been extremely professional, so I would like to thank everybody.
Thank you.
As far as the actual audits go, again, there were two audits. There was a financial statement audit, and then also a single audit. The single audit is a compliance-based audit, based on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. We look at all the federal grants that you guys get, and then we audit them based on a risk-based approach. So this year, I believe, we audited, let's see here, about 72% of all the federal awards that came through. So a significant number. We don't have to audit that much, but there's rules as to which programs we are required to audit, and unfortunately, we ended up having to do about 30% more than we typically would. So with that being said, going back to the financial statement audits, we, the county of Blair, was able to receive an unmodified opinion, which is also considered a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can give as auditors. Everything was above board. We went through all the financial transactions that were required based on our materiality levels, and everything looked top-notch as far as that goes. There were a couple new GASBs. GASBs are the statements on government auditing standards. Those are what tell us the type of accounting we have to use depending on the different audit area. The three or four that were new this year applied to Blair County, but they weren't huge. You know, it was more of a simple footnote change or just a minor wording change, nothing big. So in the past, there have been big ones where I might have spent 10 or 15 minutes trying to explain those. We didn't have any of those this year. So when you're going through the financial statements, the largest things that you'll end up seeing from a year-to-year basis, when you're trying to compare the two, I would say would definitely be the recognition of the art money from 2023 to 2024. You guys recognized about 18 million money that you'd already received but hadn't actually spent yet. So when you're looking at general fund, or I believe the Capital Reserve Fund as well, you're going to see a big increase in revenue there because of that recognition. So I believe it was about 18 million from last year to this year. The other thing you'll see, which was also a larger increase, was in general fund, you'll see an increase in taxes due to the mileage increase. I think it was about $3 million. Those would be the two largest increases you'll see from a year-to-year basis. Outside of that, all the footnotes stayed relatively the same. We didn't really have to change anything. You still had an M-DNA, which is, if you're a new reader to the financial statements, that's definitely the place where I would start. It's Management's Discussion Analysis. It's prepared by A.C. It goes through the financial statements and sort of explains those, explains what you're seeing better than just going through the financial statements. You can use, you're not bound as much by accounting jargon when you're looking at the M-DNA as you are when you're actually looking at the statements. So for a new user, that's where I would start if you really want to dive into those. So outside of that, like I said, everything was pretty much the same. We're going to talk a little bit about the single audit report. It's the much smaller report. Again, it's a compliance-based audit report. We did have two findings this year. They both pertained to the Treasurers Office. The first finding was segregation of duties. It was a repeat finding from last year based on the duties that the people within the Treasurers Office had. There wasn't a lot of give and take as far as taking money to the bank, recording it, approving deposits and those sort of things. So again, it was a repeat finding from the previous year. The second one was a timeliness of the bank reconciliations that was also through the Treasurers Office. They weren't being performed timely. I'm not 100% sure on how backed up they were. Does that, do you remember?
How long was the general fund?
Couple months. Yeah, a couple months behind as far as actually preparing those reconciliations. So anytime that something like that ends up happening, there's an increase for possible fraud or just a deviation of how your controls are supposed to be working. So with that being said, everything else was good from a compliance-based approach. We looked at all the federal audit. There weren't any findings as far as the federal audits go. So any questions?
When you find things like that, or do your office provide suggestions, recommendations, best practices on how to address those things, like those two items that you've?
Typically, yes. I know we had talked with A.C. at length the previous year, and then also again this year, as to what we can do to try to change those things, what could potentially be the ramifications for not changing them, those type of things. It's nothing that we've come out with and said, here's what you need to do to fix those. Unfortunately, as auditors, we're not allowed to make management decisions. It's part of our ethics code, so that would be a big no-no as far as us trying to tell you guys exactly what to do and how to do it. Management's really supposed to be doing those. So we can give suggestions and give everyone an idea of what it is that they're supposed to be doing, or a better way of doing something that they're already doing, but we can't physically tell you this is exactly the way that it needs to be done, so.
Well, I think as a board, we're happy to hear that the audit was good, and it continues to be good. That's a good thing. We also appreciate our staff. The controllers here, Angela's here, Lindsey's here, they're the ones who really dive into the finances. So the fact that, it's also very pleasant to hear that everyone's willing and open to helping you and that there's, you know, to get all the information that you need to do the job that you need to do. So it's pleasant to hear that, so thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You started to, but.
I think you did actually make the motion.
That could be.
I think it was just the presentation, but okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve and accept the 2024 audit reported and prepared by Z.A. LLC. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Conservation District.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So on behalf of the Blair County Agland Preservation Board, I do present a resolution to sign the agreement of sale for the 65th Ag Conservation Easement in Blair County. Easement will be on the Biddle Family Partnership Limited Partnership in what they call the Over Farm. The owners are offering 236.23 acres of the farm for an easement. Total easement value will be $488,996.10 plus approximately $10,000 in incidental costs. The county will be contributing $145,000 from the funding that was allocated to the board for the program from the County Act 13 funds. The addition of this farm will bring the county preservation farm total to 65 farms and over 9,556 acres in Blair County alone. So we're closing in on that 10,000 acres. Again, the easement was made possible by the county contributions this year of $125,000 from Act 13 funds and about $34,000 from the Clean and Green Rollback Funds. This contributed to the program, bringing in an additional over $383,000 of state funds. On behalf of the Agland Preservation Board, I request your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement of sale of purchase agricultural conservation easement to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the County of Blair joint with Biddle Family Partnership for 236.23 acres in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
This is a wonderful program, and it just goes along with what we were talking about in Ag Progress Days. This is helpful for Blair County. Thank you.
So I'd just like to thank all the efforts that you do to have 65 farms preserved and over, getting close to 10,000 acres. And when Pennsylvania is a major part of it, is agriculture, to be able to preserve us and keep it is just a great job, so thank you very much.
And we thank you for your support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. I'm going to make a motion to approve and accept the proposals received for the food service for the Blair County prison and to award or reject per county code thereafter. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? I'm just going to make a comment that we've been looking at, we've reviewed with our Finance Director, and we've been watching and monitoring for the past 19 months, the purchase of food and the operations at the correctional facility. And there were some things put in place to help reduce those costs, and we found out that those costs actually have elevated. And we found that we put an RFP out and found out that it's actually around $300,000 cheaper to bring an outside agency in to run the entire food service department versus doing it in-house. So we're happy to do this. So that's a little bit of background behind that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Mindy?
Morning. We're requesting approval of the fiscal year 25-26 Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth and Families, and New Life Adolescents LLC.
I'll make a motion to approve the 25-26 Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, CYF, and New Life Adolescent LLC. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first request is the approval for the submission of our federal fiscal year 2026 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant application to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the hazardous materials training and planning projects, which encompass four different projects for the period of October 1st, 2025, through September 30th, 2026, in the amount of $37,950. That's for our peak software hazmat team members to go to the Pennsylvania Hazmat Conference for countywide exercise and a transcare exercise.
Make a motion to approve the submission of the 2026 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant for the Pima in the amount from October 1st, 2025, through and including September 30th, 2026, in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you. We're requesting approval to rescind Resolution 376 of 2025, approving the period of performance extension for the federal fiscal year 2019 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Agreement, which was Resolution 106 of 2023, from August 5th, 2025, to August 5th, 2026, and authorizing Mark Taylor to sign the agreement.
Make a motion to approve, to rescind Resolution 376-2025, approving the period of performance extension from Federal FFY 2019 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program from August 5th, 2025, to and including August 5th, 2026, and authorizing Mark Taylor to sign the agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? One more.
And requesting approval of the period of performance extension for the federal fiscal year 2019 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Agreement, which was Resolution 106 of 2023, from August 5th, 2025, to August 5th, 2026.
Make a motion for approval, period performance extension for 2019 Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program Agreement, Resolution 106-2023, from August 5th, 2025, to and including August 5th, 2026. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Domestic relations. All right. Mark's not here. I'll take that. Domestic relations. Make a motion to approve the Title 1V-D Cooperative Agreement between the County of Blair Domestic Relations in the Court of Common Pleas and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for the Administration of the Social Security Act for the period of October 1st, 2025, through and including September 30th, 2030. Excuse me. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Fort Robledale. Morning, Glenn.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today requesting approval of the quote dated July 30th, 2025, received from Lolloman Construction LLC for topsoil and stone to finish the groundwork at the Fort Robledale lead mine site exhibit in the total amount of $1,800.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote dated July 30th, 2025, received from Lolloman Construction LLC for topsoil and stone finished, the groundwork for Fort Robledale lead mine site, in the total amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments and questions?
We are very thankful for Mr. Suter to contribute to this whole project. He has been very, very generous, and the Ford is making a lot of progress.
Yes.
This is a second, right? Second time he's done that?
Second point, at least.
Yep. So yes.
And there may be a third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elections is requesting ratification of the submission of an application for the Election Integrity Grant Program in the requested amount of $420,908.93.
Make a motion for the ratification, submission of the application for the Election Integrity Grant Program in the requested amount. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pardon me. Requesting approval for the submission of a Notice of Intent requesting grant funds in the amount of $500 to be used for reimbursement of expenses incurred for the purchase of a new version of provisional ballot envelopes for the period of July 1st, 2025, through November 4th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the submission of a Notice of Intent requesting grant funds in the amount of $500 to be used for reimbursement of expenses incurred for the purchase of a new version of provisional ballot envelopes for the period of July 1st, 2025, through and including November 4th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Southern Allegheny Services Management Group. Good morning.
We're requesting approval of the 10 early intervention contracts listed for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
Make a motion to approve the 10 early intervention contracts as listed for the period of July 1st, 2025, through and including June 30th, 2026. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trina?
Good morning.
Good morning. We're requesting approval of the federal fiscal year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Contract between the County of Blair and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $819,587.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the CDBG contract with County of Blair and DCED in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Good morning. Requesting approval of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Disbursement for the Code Compliance Repair Assistance Program to assist with repairs, replacements of rotting window casings, repair rotting cornice trims, scrape and paint siding, front and rear porch roof repairs, and gutter repairs at 2521 West Chestnut Avenue, Altoona, in the not-to-exceed amount of $5,000.
Make a motion to approve Affordable Housing Trust Fund Disbursement for Code Compliance Repair Assistance Program for the address in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Requesting approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Contract Renewal Agreement, Resolution 490 2024, between the County of Blair and the Hope Drop-In for the period of July 1, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, increasing the maximum contract amount from $75,000 to $100,000. And this is due to, this is all part of the Human Services Block Grant, and at the end of the fiscal years, when there's underspent in one agency, we can shift it to other agencies to use that money. We don't want to send it back. And then to, with the contracts, we usually have a maximum set, and we try to leave a cushion, but sometimes the cushion, we're able to add some additional funding to it that exceeds our maximum, so we have to come back to increase the maximum amount as a technicality.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion for the approval of Amendment 1 for 2024-2025 Contract Renewal Agreement between the County of Blair and Hope Drop-In for the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
So all you're doing is reallocating grant funds.
Correct.
Thank you.
And we have to increase that maximum threshold, so. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
Morning. Requesting approval of an agreement for purchases under bidding threshold between the County of Blair on behalf of Blair County Public Works Highway Department and BARZ Auto Electric Radiator and A.C. for vehicle repairs and maintenance set forth in the county-approved purchase orders.
Make a motion to approve the agreement of purchase between the County of Blair Public Works Highway Department and BARZ Auto Electric Radiator and A.C. for vehicle repairs. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick? Nick, can you stay after? Please.
Good morning. I'm requesting approval of change order number 2 to the contract between County of Blair and Burke &amp; Company LLC, Resolution 127-2025, for five replacement heat pump units for the courthouse in the additional amount of $86 for a total cost of $21,058.
Make a motion to approve change order number 2 between the County of Blair and Burke &amp; Company LLC for five replacement heat pump units in the courthouse in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
An abstention on that one?
One abstention. Thank you. Okay.
And I'm requesting approval of the payment of the invoice from Big Deal Plumbing LLC, aka Road Reader, made outside of the county's purchasing policy for emergency sewer line opening work at the Duneo MDJ office in the amount of $535.
Big Deal Plumbing, is that real?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking. I'll make a motion to approve the payment of invoices to Big Deal Plumbing, aka I'll make a motion to approve the payment of invoices to Big Deal Plumbing, aka Road Router, for emergency sewer line opening at the MDJ office. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, you should have started five minutes ago. You're clearing at the back of the room.
I'm sorry.
You're so far back, or you should have started this way five minutes ago.
I'm pretty quick still. I'm requesting approval to accept the P-Chip Claim Fund Surplus for the plan year twenty-twenty-four in the amount of thirty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, and for that refund to be distributed to the county via check payable to County of Blair.
Make a motion to approve to accept the P-Chip Claim Fund Surplus for twenty-twenty-four in the amount listed. Refund is to be redistributed to the County of Blair via check payable to the County of Blair. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Pizza on Friday. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
It's a lot of pizza. I am requesting approval of the, of an agreement between the County of Blair and Mason Hospital Occupational Health for occupational health services as outlined in the rates provided in the document dated January one of twenty-twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the agreement between the County of Blair and Mason Hospital Occupational Health for health services as documented dated January first, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
I do have a question. Is, how does this compare to what we're currently doing? Is this a different provider?
It is. We've been using Mason Occupational Health for workers' compensation. We added them to panel at least two years ago, if not prior. This is more of an expansion of what they can provide to us. For instance, by entering into this agreement, we will be able to send someone if we need a fitness-for-duty physical. If we need a functional capacity exam, they partner with Joy or PT, and we can get functional capacity exams through them. Additionally, we just received notice of an impending rate increase from Health Force for our pre-employment drug and alcohol testing and, and those types of services. And the Mason pricing is actually coming in lower than the new rates will be at Health Force effective September one. So, we will see some cost savings if we direct pre-employment drug screens to Mason rather than Health Force. Plus, we've just seen really good customer service coming out of Mason Occupational Health. They're very responsive. Their availability is terrific, and they've been a good partner to us thus far, so we'd like to expand our use of them.
Well, we appreciate their work.
Yeah, and it's good to have choices and alternatives.
Exactly.
Especially cheaper ones.
And finally, I am requesting, oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Now you may.
Okay. I'm also requesting approval of a submission of the Pennsylvania County's Workers' Compensation Trust, the P-COMP, twenty-twenty-five Salade Safety Improvement Program Grant Application for the, for thirty-five thousand dollars to go toward the purchase of a new Blair County Prison Transportation Van.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the P-COMP twenty-twenty-five Salade Safety Improvement Program Grant Application to be forwarded to the purchase of a new county prison transportation van in the amount listed. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you taking this, or we do have representatives?
Finishing up my notes, sorry. For the Salvation Army, we are requesting approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Final State Food Purchase Program SFPP expense and data report to the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture by the Salvation Army.
You can come up if you like. It's what she said. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Final State Food Purchase Program expense and data report to the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture by the Salvation Army. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? And if you would, you could explain or what this is.
So, this is basically what we had done with the state food program for the last fiscal year. Pretty self-explanatory, outlining where the money went, how many people were served by it. I don't know if you had told them. This will be my last one. I'm actually, tomorrow's my last day. I'll be moving on. I'm going to reach out to you after the twenty-fifth. I think we had spoke about that with my new contact information to help.
Bittersweet. We've never met in person, so.
Yeah.
Well, we're sorry to hear that, but thank you.
It's a good move. And like I said, it's, I'm moving up to the state, and I'll still be working with Alicia on, on this type of stuff, so, and hoping the transition is very smooth, but I'll be available with any questions.
Thank you.